Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, there'll be one change. The last item in our resolutions and action items, the reading of the Beautification Commission Amendment will not be presented tonight, so we'll just postpone that until that comes back to us ready and completed. Any other changes before we move into our consent agenda? If not... The consent agenda has minutes from the July 9 council meeting. The approval of the July 13 payroll of $129,680.47. Approval of the July 17 special payroll of $9,581.40. Approval of the USDA Step 1 debt in the amount of $12,975. Approval of the interim financing debt in the amount of $543.41 for COBANK. Acceptance of the library board minutes. We have resolution of employment in the wastewater department and a resolution of employment in the Park and Recreation Department. Also, approval of liquor licenses for the Best Western in Fairfield. Claims are in the amount of $1,587,564.65, of which two of the claims over $75,000, that being to Carl A. Nelson for $107,668.29 and PKG contracting of $1,054,549.9. Any questions regarding those consent agenda items? Okay. Now entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Now move on to our public forum and appearances, and our first is Linda Stallone regarding a wedding reception. Linda, come to the podium, please.
On September 29, which is a Saturday, we will be having a wedding reception. It's a garden reception in our backyard. At 5:00, there will be a buffet, and at 6:00, we will have Van and the movers playing in for us. They are engaged to play from 6:00 to 9:00 with the option that if everybody's having the time, they might add a half an hour. So that is why I have come to request, I guess, a waiver. I'm not quite sure what the guidelines are. I did request from the administration for some guidance, and I was told I had to come before the State Council.
Okay. Thanks, Linda. And I guess the first question is going to be, what do your neighbors know about the wedding reception plans?
Most of them are invited.
They're invited?
And they will all be informed.
All right. Counsel, any questions or concerns? I know generally we are approving these things in public places with a time limit on them that supports a 10:00 limit, but...
This one, like, runs until, what, 9:30?
9:30.
I mean, no later than 10:00, for sure, because that's all I'm paying for. Six to nine.
Right.
Maybe a little extra.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask one question?
Yes.
Are you just leaving the ordinance for noise, or are you wanting to park in some no parking zones in that area?
No, parking will be quite accommodating on the streets and driveways of neighbors. Everyone's cooperating, so I don't see any problems at all.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Then it doesn't appear to be any objections to the request to allow for the wedding reception and music to be accommodated until 9:30 p.m. Entertain a motion to approve.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Great.
Thank you very much.
Great time.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If there are guidelines that, you know, 6 to 10 would have been okay, maybe I wouldn't have had to come, because, you know, the invitations haven't come out yet, and now this is kind of like a public forum. I'm a little embarrassed.
Well, we'll be expecting ours, but... Aside from that, I don't think you'll put too much trouble. We're just going to show up.
The face started at 5:00.
All right. Next, counsel, we have a couple of citizens who would like to address regarding our discussions we had last meeting with Waste Management. Now, I don't think Dave Schaub from Waste Management is going to be here this evening. He's on our agenda. He had mentioned to us that he would come back at the next meeting, but didn't really say anything. So at this point, there isn't any action that's going to be taken, but the first request is from Ray Griffin. Ray?
Good evening. I served as the landfill manager for the three counties for 18 years, so solid waste is kind of a little something I watch after. Here a little scuttlebutt here and there. People want to know if tipping fees are going to go up. Have we reduced anything, any type of solid waste, any volume waste reductions, or anything like that? Well, back when the inception of recycling came in, back in, I think we put it in place back in '92, in cooperation with the cities, we had all agreed that in order to reduce and have the curbside recycling, that we would do two 33-gallon trash cans at that time. Don't know if it's changed since then. I see many, many, many days over the past years since I've been retired, you can see eight, 10 bags out, no stickers on them. Don't need a sticker. They'll pick it up anyway. I don't know who gets the revenue. I think the city gets revenue from the stickers. Is that correct? It doesn't go to Waste Management?
We buy the stickers at cost.
Right. Yeah. Are you... Well, where does the revenue come? So it's just the cost of the sticker?
Just the cost of the sticker, but, I mean, I don't know if Waste Management gets the sticker or who gets a sticker, but, you know, I see this time after time. They picked 10 bags up the other day, and I look now and then to see if anything's tagged, you know? I mean, I've been doing it for 20 years, you know, with the landfill trying to reduce things. So somewhere along the line, I think Waste Management needs to inform their employees and say, hey, two 33-gallon bags, two 33-gallon trash cans, and then the revenues would go to the city for anything thereafter, or to Waste Management, which may help taking our costs down of solid waste. Maybe, I don't know. So I think that's important, but you can go out any day when trash is picked up on Mondays, Tuesdays, and stuff like that. You can see bags sitting all over, unmarked. I think it needs to be addressed, at least, so, you know. The other thing is, we're looking at, and this, I was just talking, they were talking about the new 96-gallon trash receptacles and stuff like that. Well, that is not going to promote any recycling of any type. I'll guarantee you that, because I know where everything's going to go now, so they might as well do away with the curbside recycling. They don't need it. They're going to have all that room to put stuff in, and sure as heck aren't going to be recycling. You'll have few people, responsible people, that's going to do it, but you're just going to be filling it up with recyclables. Now, the recyclables is only a very minute part of the landfill, a tonnage over there. It's not much. Less than 10%.
You mean what it keeps out?
Yeah, what it keeps out. Less than 10%, you know? So I guess what I'm trying to say is, not the 96-gallon ones. You know, 64 is plenty for any household. You can put four, a 64-gallon receptacle, you can put four 33-gallon bags in that. Easy, you know? Easy. No problem. So does anyone know, as we talk about recycling or tonnage waste, our tonnage fees and everything over to landfill, does anyone know, have we reduced any volume waste reduction between 19, from 17, or, excuse me, from 2017 to 2016? Has anyone ever posted that, or I've never seen anything?
You're a Sevco representative.
You know, Ray, where I am, on the Waste Management board.
How's your nails? Yeah, but anyway, I never see anything, have we reduced? And if we have reduced our solid waste to the landfill, well, does that warrant an increase? I think the money from the bags, if we do it properly, will create a fairly good revenue. So it's just a few points to ponder. I'd like to, you know, and I'd like to know, have we reduced, you know, anything at all? The 96-gallon, you might as well do away with the curbside recycling, because it's not going to do you any good. At the cost of what it cost us to do the curbside recycling, you can put it over in the landfill.
How do you feel about mandatory compliance with those bins regardless of size, whether it's a 64 or the 96?
Well, I think...
Because that's the...
Let's put it this way, Waste Management, and, you know, they want to make it efficient for them, and so they can pick it up with their truck and stuff like that. I can see that. I don't have any problems with that. Sure, they want to make it a little easier. I mean, them boys got a hard job out there on the truck every day, slinging bags and everything like that, but I just think they need to recognize the bags that are out there, the additional bags. I seen a contractor the other day rehabbing a house. 12 bags, carpet, everything else, not a sticker on them. Every one was picked up. So maybe mention something.
Aaron will, yeah, talk to...
And I do think, seriously, you should consider doing away with the curbside recycling program. Let them take any recyclables, because all there's, only money for them is in cardboard anyway. Let them take it out to the, you know, to our recycling center, and save all that money, and don't worry about our tipping fees, you know? Because we'll have extra money.
The year that we made that transition to the larger containers, we increased our recycling by 70%. I think it's pretty good. I think the recycling program works pretty well. I think if we go backwards, we'll really lose everything. I take your point about the larger...
Right.
And you may get some people who aren't going to separate, but I think we've developed, you know, Ray, it's been 25 years, if it was '92 or 26 years. So I think we have developed a culture of recycling, so I think people will continue.
I do, too. But it'd be interesting just to see the numbers.
And the larger majority.
Have we?
Martin, we'll get the numbers and report to the council about...
I think it'd just be interesting for the public to know, so they're not out there hollering about this going up, that's going up, but, you know, if the recycling program's working, fine. If it's not, if the numbers, you know, are going down, 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 don't need that curbside recycling. And you know what percentage that is of the solid waste?
Right.
Less than 10%. Just a drop in the bucket.
Can I take a point? Right now, the proposal on the table is to have the smaller bins being the standard issue, and the larger bins being optional.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
Just so not everyone can get a 96-gallon bin.
But is there a different fee for the, the larger ones are going to create more tipping fee for the, you know, so...
Well, I asked Dave when he was here last fall, spring, if with the larger bins there was a larger flow, and he said, no, they didn't see a change in the amount of waste that they were picking up, because they had larger bins.
And then all they need is the small ones.
Well, that's a good point.
Takes care of that. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Ray. Appreciate it.
Over what period of time was that? What period of time was that, that they didn't see the larger?
I thought always.
The thing is, I think is...
I mean, some people do with larger bins, but most people don't need them.
I've always thought if you have room for more stuff, you're probably going to have more stuff. So if you have a larger trash bin, over time, it's going to generate trash. So the progress that the city has made in recycling over the years, having a larger trash bin sitting next to it, even if it's 64 gallons, there's a concern to me, and it's been expressed to citizens, talking and discussions with them, that that's going to somehow generate, possibly generate trash.
It'd be interesting to see if they had data from other cities, what the introduction of larger bin did do on the waste flow, stream, size of the stream.
Yeah.
They probably have that information.
Okay. Next, Lyle Maudlin would also like to address counsel regarding our waste issues. You brought samples.
Brought this week's trash. In this hat, somewhere between 130, 40, something in that neighborhood of people who disagree with the idea of being forced to have to have a can with wheels on it and all that.
Okay.
This represents my weekly garbage that goes out to the curb each week, and it kind of looks like a small amount to put into a can.
Yeah.
So consequently, that was the reason for bringing it to you. And like I say, there's these names, a good many of them are out where I live, out around Carrington Point, but there are many others from all over. I've got names from all around the country club area, down in the southwest part of town, different areas. If anybody wants to look at them, like...
Yeah, if you'd like to turn them in, that's fine. Do you want a copy of those to bag?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I just went and talked to some people, and I asked them if they were opposed to it, as I was, and...
What's their, and what are some of the main reasons?
Like, one of my neighbors, she, I was talking to her, and she said, well, she has this little can, and I assumed it was probably about like a kitchen can, you know, and she puts it on her walker, on the seat of her walker, and walks it out to the curb and sets it down. She says, I don't know how I'm going to get one of those cans on my walker.
Right.
And also, I can see problems with these cans. And we visualize this, we've got a recycling day and trash pickup day. So that means, like out there where I live, we live four people, four residents to a building, so we don't have all that much curb. We've got snow a foot and a half deep. So here we are with four recycling cans, four garbage cans, and they must be set out, I mean, I haven't heard them say this, but I know it's coming, set out along the curb within so many inches of the curb, not back any more than that, not forward any more than that, and so much space between, and anything it'll come to, anything that is not the way they say, they will drive on by and your garbage will still be sitting there. So that's another problem I can see.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Lyle. Any questions or comments? What is our timeline, Doug, on the contract for Waste Management coming back?
The only thing that has to be resolved is the residential fee. We had proposed 1196, and they wanted 1205, so we had to figure that out. I think that's why Dave's working on that with his corporate people.
Okay.
So I'm hoping in a month?
Sometime in August.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you again, because the topic has been getting a lot of feedback. I think there's still a lot of questions and ideas that people would like to bounce off of Waste Management as far as options, but we'll visit the topic again, I'm sure. The council will move to our resolutions, action items, and ordinances, and the first is a change order, and we have with us Alex Potter from McLaur Engineering. Alex?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So tonight, we have change order number four for the wastewater treatment plant improvements, bid package one project, which is the treatment facility improvements. So this change order was requested by the city, but it's the installation of a septic tank dump station, and it's actually going to be near manhole one, which is just north of the treatment facility. The purpose of the change basically is to provide a location that's kind of out of the regular traffic area of the plant for the city's back truck, as well as septic tank haulers to dump their waste, and dump that into the sanitary sewer upstream of the treatment operation, so that all of those nasty solids and grit can be effectively removed through the treatment process. So the change consists of a precast concrete structure with an aluminum access hatch on top of that, and there's going to be a pipe directly from that structure into the new manhole one. And then to provide some washdown area, because that's generally a messy operation when you're dumping septic tank waste or trying to empty out the back truck, we have extended a water line up toward that structure in order to kind of clean things up and make things a little more tidy.
Okay.
So the change is for $26,300. So I guess we're requesting tonight that you would approve that change order, and then we would direct the contractor, if approved, to leave that work.
I've got a couple of questions. A few years back, we suspended all septic tank haulers, septic back haulers from dumping at our treatment plant, because we had so much problems with trying to keep up with load.
Yep.
At that time. Melanie, are we going to reinstate bringing or allowing that to happen?
I don't know that that's ever been discussed, to reinstate it. I think the main purpose of it was to provide Sean and the wastewater plant staff...
Well, I understand something for the backer truck. And something convenient that way, but I was just...
Yeah, that was not factored into our decision at all here. This was, if we don't do anything, the back trucks don't have anywhere to dump.
Right. Right.
Darren, I guess I can't answer your question, because I thought we were still having them dump. I didn't realize that we didn't.
Well, we suspended it one time. I don't know, they may have reinstated that in the last four years.
I know that was a discussion several years ago.
Yeah, it was, because we were having problems handling the amount that was showing up, and we couldn't process it, and then it would overflow on us, and we didn't want that any longer. And I think it was Ken Garing was the superintendent at the time that requested that we stop taking that kind of stuff, and I didn't know whether we had ever reinstated being able to do that or not.
I'm not sure about what we're doing now. I do know that that is a good revenue source for the city when we have the ability to handle it. So in addition to having a place for, I mean, it's needed for the city's operation, but if we would start accepting it again, if we're not already, it would be additional revenue for the sewer department.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say that before you accept anything, you'd want to make sure, and we'd help you with this, that, you know, any loadings that you would get from septic tank haulers would not adversely impact treatment plant operations.
And since this is an addition of about $27,000 to the overall cost, that does cut into what our reduction was from our bids.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
But how far up does that push us in the total project scheme? Because I think we've only got $25 million.
Well, it looks like...
It only brings us to 22.
If this is what's in here, the original contract price was $21,546.9, and the current is $20,947.4. Adding 26 takes us to $20,973, so we're still about $600,000 under the original contract price.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we have that, because there's going to be...
That is correct.
Yeah, it could be.
So, yes. To piggyback on your question, Darren, so I think the letter of conditions that you guys signed with USDA was a total financing package of $33.1 million. Right now, excluding the roughly $1 million of contingency fund that we haven't touched yet, you guys are, even with this change, would be sitting under that by $617,000.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else have any questions, counsel? If not, entertain a motion to approve the change order.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Anderson. Second by Flornoy. Need discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Great. Actually, thanks for coming down. Appreciate it. Next, counsel, we have consideration to accept the East Avenue, East Adams Avenue paving project phase one as final, and Stephen Pedrick is here from French Renniker.
You have our letter in your packets. I guess if there's anything in particular you'd like us to go over, we can. This is the first phase of the Adams Avenue project. Accepting it as final. I guess maybe the one item to note is that assuming you accept it tonight, that will trigger the beginning of the four-year warranty period for the project, which would be secured by the contractor's bond if anything were to happen in the next four years, so...
Stephen, I have a question. In the section of Adams that's still gravelled, is that considered part of phase two?
I'm filling in for someone who's not here, so yes, it is.
Okay. I just know there's a chunk that is like beautiful, and then a chunk of gravel, and then what we're getting ready to work on.
Yep. And phase two has been awarded to Jones Contracting, and they're currently on 227th and Highway One, and they've told us their plan is to go to Adams whenever they finish with that, so...
I just want to make sure we're not going to have two beautiful chunks and then gravel them.
No, they'll connect when we're all done.
Okay, counsel, so you will be releasing the final retainage of $6,560.26. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay. Thank you. Next, counsel, we're going to set a public hearing for August 13. A council meeting, and this will be for proposed improvements for the resurfacing of East Buchanan Avenue, South Maple Street, and North and South Park Street. So entertain a motion to set the public hearing for August 13.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy. Second by Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, counsel, there's a request to install a barricade at the end of an alley. This is between East-West Alley, between Third and Fourth Street, Grimes and Depot. Public safety, this is coming from your committee, Michael?
Yeah, this was from a few meetings ago. Paul Glossipuon's property in that area requested this. It's not that that alley goes anywhere currently. He was concerned that if and when the accelerated learning housing gets built, that they would try to use that alley, and it would cause issues for his tenants. The condition before we would move on this was that he would talk with the accelerated learning people, and he hadn't until prior to this meeting. So he's fulfilled his obligation, talked to Buzz Allen. Buzz Allen doesn't have a problem with there being a barricade, and so now we're bringing it to council for approval.
So this is an alley that comes off of Fourth Street and goes east, and it basically just runs into the back of that property. It's no longer an alley that goes all the way to Third.
No, it just basically, it's an L shape, or...
Right.
And so it grants access to behind his buildings, but that's it.
His residents use it all.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion to approve this.
Motion by Hallie to approve the request for barricades. Second by Flornoy. Need discussion? Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passed. Thank you. Next, we have a request for approving application for a grant to the Iowa DOT for improvements at Ninth Street and Burlington. Michael, are you going to speak to this as well?
Sure. So anybody who's been in that area knows that because Ninth Street doesn't align at the intersection with Burlington, it's a bit of a tricky issue for people to try to cross it. In 2015, the city participated in the Iowa Roadways Program, and it was identified as an issue, and a kind of a modified version of the crosswalk was proposed. We, the city, used that proposal in a grant application for well-marked grant and did not get it, and so no improvements were made. And last year, there was a very tragic accident at that intersection where a pedestrian was struck by a vehicle and killed. And so silver lining, I suppose, is that it's changed the rating of that intersection such that the DOT will more likely grant funds to improve it, now that there's been such a tragedy there. So I'm working with Melanie on a grant application for DOT funding to do some improvements there for the pedestrians. I'll leave it to Melanie to talk about the details.
Jason, I don't know if you're able to open the PDF, but page 10 of the attachment has the sketch of the area of what we are proposing. And right now, there's a crosswalk in the center. And through some other studies, I've found is that when you're making a left-hand turn or going straight through that offset intersection, I guess you're not seeing, the driver's not seeing that crosswalk head-on within full vision. So what we're proposing is moving those crosswalks to the stop bars, which gives you less points of conflict with this application. Then we're also proposing that we upgrade the pedestrian signals to include the countdowns, as well as making the push buttons ADA accessible and the curb ramps. We do have curb ramps in those area. They don't necessarily meet current guidelines. So the application is for all of these activities. About two-thirds of the project cost is directly related to the safety, with a third being for some other maintenance items, such as the curb ramps. But this is a 100% grant opportunity, I mean, it can be 100% grant opportunity for all of the aspects. On the application, one of the things they ask for, to what Michael was saying about this being an intersection that needs to be looked at, prior to the fatality in 2017, this intersection was listed as number 391 statewide as needing improvements. It was the number one intersection within the city limits that the DOT recommended for improvements. So it's a good thing to be looking at now. Another thing that we, you know, we're looking at the discussions that we've had about maybe changing the layout of Burlington, just any other changes to that area. And we think that this will provide us with immediate pedestrian improvements without changing or keeping us from being able to do improvements in the future. This application is due August 15th, but funds are not available until next fiscal year. So this is a longer-term project. And then when we do the local road safety program that we're part of a pilot study with them, if for any reason that they would come up with a different suggestion, again, I think we have really good bones to what we're proposing here, that if they would come up with something different, we could modify things.
Two additional points. One is when we had the walking audit last December, Ethan, the traffic expert, emailed a layout that was used in another city that had an island in the middle and no left turns coming off of Ninth Street, which we felt was too disruptive to traffic, especially people who are, except they're trying to get a spot in the east parking lot and can't find one for the rec center, and they want to go around the north, they wouldn't be able to turn left there. So this is not as safe as that, but actually allows traffic to keep its natural flow. And the second point is this resolution does say that the city will commit to maintaining the upgrades. So while we may get 100% funding for them, we are responsible for maintaining them, and that's what this resolution is for. And it's a necessary part of the grant application.
Okay, thank you.
Do the countdown lights have an audio signal?
We weren't proposing that, but they do have that option.
It's going to be ADA compliant, you might include that, I suppose.
Yep.
It's what I suggested I have.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Not entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the grant application.
So moved.
Second by Hallie and second by Flornoy. Any questions or discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign.
And I will abstain because of my employment through the Iowa Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Darren. Next, council, in my report, there are three other community members that I would like to propose for the Advisory Committee for the Comprehensive Plan. And that would be Dee Sanquist, County Supervisor, representing Jefferson County, David Tote, representing MUM, Amy Weber, President of Cambridge Investment Research, representing our private sector. I will have one more from the manufacturing sector, I'm just waiting to hear back, so that this, these three will just about complete our list. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, our committee reports, Ways and Means. Tom?
Yes, we met tonight, Doug and Martha and I. We had two items on the agenda. The first one, though, because of Mr. Morrissey's lack of, we had to postpone that, we'll delay that until he returns. The second item was Petrus Place, the park place that they're going to have down there by the Civic Center.
Oh, right, yeah.
Requested some possible city involvement with making some improvements there. And it was the committee's recommendation, because we were under the assumption it was to be a completed gift. And we don't feel that the city should be involved with that at this point, that once it's given to the city, it should be a completed gift at that point. At this point, they're still doing some of the extra work on it. So we just didn't feel it was appropriate for us to be involved.
And that was, they have requested removal of some gravel.
Yeah, there's some gravel, some other dirt and things like that. We just didn't think it was appropriate. That's our recommendation.
Okay. So we wanted to make that a motion?
We'd like to have a motion.
Yeah, let's do that.
I guess I'd make that motion, then the city not participate in that portion of the program for Petrus Place.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Hallie.
And add that our financial policy that the council adopted a few years back actually states that projects that are bequeathed to the city must be fully funded. So we couldn't approve this without going against our own financial policy.
Got it. Okay, any other points or discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Anything else, Tom?
No.
Okay. What Tom was referring to, our city attorney, John Morrissey, who had an unexpected hospital situation come up, a health situation come up, that took him to Iowa City Hospitals this weekend for surgery. So we definitely wish John the best and his family, letting him know that our thoughts and prayers are with him. Next, we'll move to our Water and Sewer Utilities Committee.
Water and Sewer Utilities Committee met this evening, prior to council. And there was only one item that we dealt with, basically, which has been kind of on the books for several months. It has been delayed, delayed, delayed. But we did, there was a request for both a sewer and also a water money to be returned. We determined the fact that we would refund his, the difference, which is $2,281.81, that he will be credited for sewer. The water bill remains the same, but we would like to ask the council to approve this difference. And it goes to, actually, to David Bayer. And it's an unfortunate thing that happened during the winter months. And so, as I say, we would like at this point to ask that the council approve the difference for the sewer.
Okay, thank you, Martha.
Just to add a little, there was a water pipe under his house that broke, and so the water leaked onto the ground. So we can't waive the water fee, because the water was treated and used, but it did not go in our sewer system. So we're proposing to waive the sewer portion.
Move approval. So moved by Rasmussen, second by Flornoy. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to make a comment. This bill has been paid, and this is just going to be a credit back to his account over a period of time, is how we're handling it, correct?
Yes, he already had paid.
Okay.
It had been paid, but he realized when the bank notified him that his water bill was quite large.
Yeah.
And so.
Sounds like it.
So in the meantime, that it has been, the water amount was paid, and then, so this, he really has paid, but this will be going as a credit. He has about a $700. So he's actually going to be getting about a $1,500 credit on his account.
Okay. All right, Doug.
Okay.
That was just my question. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other points? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, we have our administrative reports. Melanie with a project update.
Since we don't have McLaur here very often for the project updates, I'm going to let Alex talk about the wastewater treatment plant, the equalization, rather than my three sentences that are on the report here.
Sure. Well, we just started doing these recently, but we've been putting together these biweekly project updates. We've been sending to Melanie and Aaron and Sean to try to kind of make sense of all the things that are going on out at the wastewater plant since construction season is in full swing. So I guess with that, we'll probably be sending those to at least the mayor, and then probably to council going forward, so you guys are more apprised over here in the summer. So bid package two, the equalization basin, that's probably the easiest one to go through first. So Carly Nelson is very, very close to substantial completion at the equalization basin. We had a walk-through, I think, two weeks ago, last Thursday. We've developed a punch list for various items that need to correct. They've actually corrected, I think, probably a dozen of those, probably 25 items so far. And we're anticipating bringing substantial completion on that project council in early August. So things are very good there. At the wastewater plant, PKG's been very busy, almost daily concrete pours, it seems like, on various structures, but they've made a lot of progress on the Influent Stormwater Pumping Building, as well as the Headworks Building, just south of there. And they have poured the center piers of the final clarifier. Oxidation ditch, they're still working on some of the earthwork around that structure. They've started the control building with the foundation footing walls and some of the plumbing. And they have started pouring concrete at the blower building as well. So there's five different structures, I think, that they're in, kind of once every day, pouring concrete, setting forms, that sort of thing. As far as site piping goes, they've done some, you know, miscellaneous site piping, small diameter stuff around the control building. They have started the 36-inch Influent pipe from the Influent Stormwater Pumping Building to the Headworks Building. And they've actually taken that a little bit farther south, I believe, in the last week since I've been at the plant. And I think they're starting preparations to do the 54-inch Influent sewer to Manhole One, which is going to be a pretty deep excavation, similar to the project last year. I guess other items, all of the concrete has came in really well, as far as compressive strength, so it's good to see. At this point, we don't really have any, haven't really had any major issues or resolutions that we need to go through. I know over the past month or so, there were some issues with water service to the control building. It sounds like that's been finally addressed after a few temporary repairs. And I guess we just ask for your patience on that. The contractor has been trying to install some pipes in a pretty crowded area near the control building. And then I guess planned work for the next two weeks, they want to finish up kind of the top of the Influent Stormwater Pumping Building and backfill a lot of the site around there. So the site will be looking a lot different here, probably the next time that I talk to you guys. They are going to keep working on the Headworks Building. I think they're going to prepare for walls here pretty soon. And then the oxidation ditch is going to be the big ticket item here over the next month, where they do a lot more concrete work. Anything else move it on? Questions, comments?
I think we need to get out and see it. A lot of stuff happening.
We're planning to fly our drone, I think, here in the next week or so, so we'll have some more pictures for you guys to get bird's eye view of the situation, so.
That'd be great.
And the video will come along with that?
Yeah, we'll get you the video again, too.
Okay.
Yeah, no. The video's kind of cool, but you got to watch it like six times fast forward. They fly pretty slow, so.
All right, thanks for staying for the project update. Appreciate it.
The one thing to add on the treatment plant, as Alex mentioned, there's a lot of concrete going on. And so with the closure of 227th, that has added to the traffic on the detour. Sean and his crews have been working with the county crews on keeping that, watering it down and applying dust control as best we can, given the volume of trucks that are on it. On 227th, the update that I do have is that they're planning on paving a large portion of 227th on Friday. So not quite to the point of opening it, but having the concrete down is a huge step forward, so hopefully relieving that detour traffic very shortly. Another one I wanted to point out is Walton Lake, that the concrete work on Walton Lake is complete. The crews have backfilled that. And now the only work that's going on out there is the cleaning and the shaping of the outfall structure. There's a lot of the waste concrete from the spillway was stored down there, and now it's getting cleaned up and shaped better. On Adams, phase two, that Stephen talked about, as well as Court Street, both of those projects, the contracts have been signed, but we don't have a start date. And then the last item I wanted to point out to you guys, unless you have any other questions, is starting July 30th, the alleys adjacent to City Hall will be closed. This is attached to your agenda as the press release for the alley closure. Bringing it to your attention, as well as the media attention, that the alleys will be closed to pedestrians and to traffic, for the safety of the crews and everyone involved. The drop box for utility bills will be closed to drive-up traffic, but you can still access it by foot, or if we're open, you can go ahead and bring it in. So we want to make sure everyone's aware of that, and we'll start to see that work beginning next week. If there are any other questions, that's all I have for an update.
Okay, thank you, Melanie. Appreciate it. Next, are you going to speak regarding the press release?
Well, she just talked about the press release for the alley closure.
Okay.
The last thing I was going to talk about is that I had a citizen come in and talk about the rec center and the bathroom situation in the women's side there, particularly. I've gone over and worked with Calvin. We've got some setup to kind of address the issues there with a cleaning schedule and to make that more presentable, at least to document how things are going. So that should be getting improved as time goes on, so that some of our council members don't continue to have issues with it.
Thank you.
You know, it's, thinking about, you know, the process we went through in constructing both the pool and the rec center out there, and that was one of the things that was cut out, was putting in some new changing rooms and bathrooms. I wish we had kept in some money for upgrading what we have in there right now, but I think it's definitely very important, you know, given the fact that we have well-used, good quality facilities out there now. We should really have the shower and bathroom facilities to match. So I think it's just something to watch for going forward, opportunities to make some improvements there.
One of the complaints was that some of the showers weren't working. And those are actually all fixed. So that wasn't, when the complaint got to me, she was behind on to honor information. So all the shower heads and stuff at that point in time have been addressed, so.
Great. Thank you. Anything else, Aaron?
Nope.
Not counsel on any other business? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Entering adjourn.